It is so good to see everyone today for our first board retreat. And so, very exciting, very exciting. So, today, we will actually engage in a couple of things. So, all of you have in front of you, really, an overview of what will occur today. The first thing, we will do is really do a little bit of team building. We'll talk about what does it mean to be a high-performing team? And what are some of the preferences we all have? After that, we will talk about our communication norms. And love will settle on a few of those things. We will even have a very timely example around communication for us to discuss. Additionally, I will go into our milestone scores and I will talk about the results that we've had thus far. And then finally, we will go into executive session. As, you know, as a board and as a governance team. So, without further ado, so that we can stay on track and on time, I want to introduce to you our co-facilitators. So, co-facilitators, this is very exciting. When I say co-facilitators, because both of these individuals have been a part of my leadership journey in various ways. And so, Dr. Robert Abosa is a retired superintendent, who was a superintendent in Fulton County Schools. But guess what? I didn't work for him. And so, when he was in Fulton County Schools, I was actually in Atlanta Public Schools. But yet and still has been a part of my leadership journey to the role that I stand before you now as superintendent. And additionally, Ms. Berna was former board president in Fulton County Schools. I did work under her leadership in my most recent roles in Fulton, but now she works for the Georgia School Board Association. And so, Dr. Abosa has been a part of that leadership journey. He's like, I would love to be a part of your first board retreat. Dr. Whitaker, I said, of course. Ms. Berna, same from the association, as well as knowing this is your first board retreat. So, why not have them work together? So, I want to say this is probably one of the first times that there has been a true, probably, co-facilitation of a former board member who actually was part of, you know, your, your leadership as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. She can talk to me if you need something. We can talk a little more about that as well.
Awesome. There you are.
Thank you, Julie.
Well, I'm in the board and I'm next, plus you sitting in the back here. You're such a critical part of the work that the board does. And thank you all for being here today. I'm Julie Berna. You can read about what I am. I am a product of Atlanta Public Schools. I grew up in town, attended University of Georgia, married my childhood sweetheart. Came to board service just as being a volunteer mom in the schools, PTA, school board council, which some of you may have come that same journey from being involved with your kids and got into school board service and really enjoyed it. Was on the Fulton County Board of Education for 23 years. And was fortunate enough-
Twenty-three years.
On a team that hired Dr. Abosa to come in. We were his first superintendency and his best superintendency. And I am here today now, working to help train more members across district and across state. So, really excited to be working again with your team. And I said before to cater, you got it together. And I can't wait to see what you continue to do. I'm really excited to be a part of it. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, Ms. Berna. I appreciate that. I'm Robert Abosa, longtime educator and recovering school superintendent. I like to share this because it's been a big part of who I am. I'm an immigrant to the US. I moved to, to the US when I was five years old. English was not my first language. And like many immigrants who come here, they're seeking an opportunity for, for education for their children, for for them to do a little better. So, growing up with an immigrant family, school was really shoved down my throat. And I wasn't good at it. Couldn't read. It took a long time for that to happen. And then, all of a sudden, it all happened. And it happened quickly. And I went from, you know, having two parents who didn't have a high school diploma to running the ninth-largest school system in the country. That only happens with high-quality public education. That's the reality of what makes America the best place on earth. So, I started off as a teacher and a coach, assistant principal and principal. My absolute favorite job ever was running a large comprehensive high school in downtown Orlando called Olympia High School. It was a great job. I, I then, after 12 years, went to Charlotte, North Carolina to be the chief of staff, and then ultimately deputy superintendent. Incredibly progressive school system that had, and our, our tenure there, after six years, culminated in the Broad Prize, which is the most coveted prize for closing achievement gaps. But we went from having a 40% achievement gap in Algebra I between white and non-white students to 9%. And so, that was a huge decrease. And a lot of that really started with the way we approached mathematics early on. And what we're seeing now across the country with literacy, another great opportunity for us to close achievement gaps, thinking about the science of reading. I left Charlotte and came to Fulton County where I was superintendent. I enjoyed it. It was a little scary because they had had, I don't know, three, four, or five superintendents in seven years. A very complicated system with two very polar opposite views of the world. And the complexity, and that's why I said 23 years on the board, you all have a hard job. And you don't get paid to do it, right? Or not much, or anything, really. In Florida, I don't want anyone to be mad, but the board members make $50,000 a year. And they get medical benefits and retirement. So, Georgia needs to get their act together on that because being a board member is incredibly difficult and time-consuming. But after my time in Fulton, I decided to get back home where my parents were aging and I'd moved my kids a couple of times. And thank goodness I did. My parents are still doing well. They're 86 and 83. I was superintendent in Palm Beach County. We had 21 DNF schools that had been on the list for years. And after just two years, we got them off the list. School system was moved to an A status for the first time in years. Then I worked as an executive vice president at a publishing company. It was the worst job I ever had. It was terrible. But it taught me the value of the partnership that could exist between public and private sectors and how we can actually solve problems. And so, the last couple of years that I've been working with Cheese Per Change and a variety of other projects, including working with school boards across the country. I'm doing a project right now in Gwinnett with the Gwinnett County School System. And also in partnership with a former board member, trying to help them coalesce around some complicated things. So, we're going to be spending about four hours together today. I want to just do a quick introduction. We can have the staff members, just if you could, just stand up and tell us your name and your position. And, and then we'll have the board do something similar. So, how about we start right over here so everybody knows each other?
Good morning, everyone. I'm a call for our long-term chief of-
Good morning. I'm in circles for every people.
Good morning, Suzanne Rich. Good morning, Angela Williams.
This is the, yeah, Francis Holt, Chief of State Department.
Good morning, Karen Hinton Scott, Chief of State Department.
Good morning, Leader of Room, Chief of Education.
Good morning, Tiffany Walker, Chief of Research and Development.
Good morning, Jennifer Barton, Assistant Superintendent, teaching.
Hello, there, Chief. Thank you. So, board members, if you don't mind, just tell us your name and why you ran for the board? And also, the length of time you've been on the board and what you're most proud of about the district? So, if you want to take just a second to think about that, and I don't know, Chairman, if you'd like to go first? Or you can delegate to the appropriate person?
No, that's fine. James Herndon. I ran for Board of Education because I was publicly complaining about something and Eric Goebbels informed me that I was just wholly unimpressed. And as a teacher, I was passionate about staying in education, which wasn't a possibility to me professionally any longer. And this was just a natural response to those things coming together.
And how long have you been on the board?
Four years. Up for reelection this year. What am I most proud of about districts? That's a lot. I think most recently, as I've read about what's happening in other districts, knowing this teacher getting fired, this teacher being, or I have an uncle who was a long-term board member in Bullock County. He talks to me about the fights. This district, this school, this board, there are just some things that we not only agree about, we take them for granted. You know, I read the Cobb thing and my immediate thought was like, I bet the board would love to hire that teacher. How do we do that?
Thank you so much.
I'm Carmen Sultan. I am the vice chair of the board. I am a pediatrician by training and an emergency medicine physician by secondary training. So, children have always been my passion, I think, in some form or fashion. They excite me. They maybe be curious. In my paying job, this is literally my non-paying job. I catch them on their first day and I felt like this was an opportunity to catch kids on their best day. So, when I get to go into this, to the schools and see the teachers, and see them in the classroom, it's just a different way to serve children. So, I feel like this was an opportunity to serve children in a different way. And I'm most passionate about seeing children succeed. I feel like every child, every child gets a chance. Every child can succeed. Every child can have the same level of success that I've had if we just give them a chance. So, I'm just, I've always been grateful to have this seat and have this role.
And how long have you been on the board?
It's my second year. So, I think the thing that I'm most proud about in schools, the cares, the teachers, I have four children. One that's graduated out, one that is just starting at college heights. So, we've got a long way to go and come a long way. And I've had some teachers that are just phenomenal. I can think of about 10 just off the top of my head. And I think we've been able to recruit and maintain and grow and have some just wonderful teachers. Some that I think are, I mean, one, that's two, okay, three, that are single-handedly responsible for my own children's success. So, I think I'm most, as possible as me and my husband. So, I think I'm most proud of our teachers.
Thank you so much.
My name is Tasha. I've been on the board for eight years. This is my last, my last year. I ran because I was, I have a heart to serve. I'm a social worker by trade. And so, I was looking for something. And I wasn't quite sure what that was going to look like. And then I was tapped by one of the dearest members of this community, who was a former mayor. And she, she sat me down and I was actually at Jana's house. And she kind of tapped me and said, this is, this is what you're looking for. And so, it has been, I think, one of the best decisions that, that I've made in my adult life, for sure. I've, I've, it's been some hard times. It's been some, but it's been some really great times. Even though being the chair during COVID was the most challenging time, that is what I'm most proud of. How our, our board and our district was able to get through some very rocky times and be able to sit here now in the space that we are.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. I'm Jana Dotson Davis. I'm a former teacher here in the district, also from Fulton County. And I ran for the board with the encouragement of some community members. But it felt like a natural progression from my role as a teacher in a way to continue the equity work that I had started as a classroom teacher at the middle school. I've been on the board for four years. And I'm most proud of the equity work that we have started. I think that we stand out in terms of what other districts are doing in the country. But I, I recognize that there's still lots of opportunities there for growth. I was a former special ed teacher here. And I'm also very proud of our special ed department here.
I was too.
Yeah. And so, those are the things I'm most proud of.
Thank you.
Hans Futz. I've been on the board two years. Came in with a comment. I ran for the board because I actually was informed about a couple of things that I didn't like seeing happening several superintendents ago. And I felt that I needed to put my money where my mouth was, right? I'm plotting lots and felt that maybe, maybe I should step up to the, step up to the challenge. I'm actually really, really proud of this, this team that, that, that I'm honored to be able to be on. I think we have come together through some difficult times and done some really incredible things. I think Dr. Whitaker being here and a team behind her are indicative of that. And, and I think that we're well positioned to excel going forward. And that is definitely worth $50,000 dollars a year.
Not one brought down.
No.
That's one of our pain points.
No, but listen, here's the thing. Incredible transition statement around the importance of team. And great teams win and lose together. You're not always going to win, right? But if you have a set of core values, beliefs, a mission, a vision statement that we can agree to, a lot of great things can happen, right? And part of that is understanding how we operate. How do we operate? You all have your own personal lived experiences. I certainly have my own. And there were times I had to have the courage to press against political opposition on things that were part of my core values. And I could sleep at night knowing that I said no to something to adults that were really good for kids. Does that make sense? And so, there are times you've got these opposing values and you've got to come up with as a team, what is our north star, right? And part of that for us is building a great team. So, what are we going to do today? Superintendent already walked through a little bit of what that agenda looks like. And so, what we'd like to do now is understand a little bit about preferences in group. And although the board really only has one employee, which is the superintendent, the team plays an incredibly important role in helping the superintendent execute on the direction and the areas of focus of the board, okay? And so, we're going to have staff members also participate in this little activity that I think will show. And before I start is, you know, part of the importance of a superintendent and governance team starting off with this kind of retreat is that if we put all the rules of the game on the table and we establish norms, values, how we want to do business together, then there's not disappointment in the fact that I really wish I got information this way because I'm this type of person who likes X, Y, and Z. So, if we can establish those rules of the game early, we're able to execute for boards that we serve on, the boards that we serve. All right. So, I know many of you are going to disagree with this. Look, just follow me for a minute because I'm going to force you to pick only one direction. In this activity, we're going to have north, south, east, and west. And you have to identify for yourself the one that most closely resembles your style at work, okay? Because some of us have a slightly different view of how we maybe raise our children or with our loved ones. So, the north, you're in the north, you're one of those people who just says, let's do it. Let's get after it. Let's try this. Let's plunge in, right? That's the north. The south typically is a person who's super caring, likes to know how everybody else feels, wants to make sure everybody's heard before they make a decision, okay? The east is a person who speculates, who likes to look at the big picture, but wants to understand all the possibilities before they actually act, okay? The west likes to pay attention to detail, likes to know the who, the what, the when, the where, and the why before acting. So, they really want to know the details. All right. So, what I need you to do is stand up. And this is what we're going to do just real quickly. And because we come from Florida, unaware of the direction in the area. North is this way. So, if you're north, then would you come see over here by Julia? If you are south, you'll be over here. If you are west, you're here. And if you're east, you're on that side. I know some of you will say, well, I'm kind of a northwest or northeast. For this activity, you can do it that way. Hey, this is- Where's south?
South is here.
All right. So, north, south, east, west. Let me say that again. North, south, east, west. All right. So, I want you to look around the room for a moment. For those of you who know each other, would you have put those people in that space?
Absolutely.
So, you know, some of you've known each other. Okay, just out of curiosity. All right, here's what we're going to do. I want you guys to turn and talk with each other at your own area. What are the strengths you see in your style? What are three or four things that the north thinks are their strengths, or the south, east, or the west? Turn and talk. So, just stick to the strength. What are the strengths? All right, 30 more seconds. Describe your strength. I know, sorry, sorry. All right. So, just the first question. What are the strengths of your style? Okay. All right. Strength of your style. We're going to go with the south first, which if you remember, these are people who care, want to hear everybody. What are your strengths? Why is it important that we have the south? Take others into consideration. What else?
Compassion.
Compassion. Everybody's been heard and responding. Anything else?
About being people-centered and being with listeners and being able to bring people together into that, creating those relationships.
Okay, very good. North. Our north people. By the way, I would be over here myself. But go ahead. North people, tell me two, three things that are strengths of the north.
Not, not allowing perfect to be the enemy is good.
Okay.
And being able to get it done.
All right, let's get it done. We can't just- We got to make a decision. There's stuff to do. If we sit here and analyze it too long, we'll miss the opportunity. What else?
Like decisions when information is available.
Okay, making decisions that information is available.
And it's, we're going to get it done. Period. All right.
I like that. We're going to get it done. We've got stuff to do. All right, west. These are people, just to remind you. And like we see the pediatrician in this, by the way. Paying attention to detail, likes to know the who, what, when, where, why before acting. What are four strengths of your area?
We're organized.
Yeah, and they said, can you please go back? We need to read all them again. And I want to see the descriptions. Did you hear about them? Come on, Abosa, get back to them. All right, east. Speculating.
So, we are, we're not going to make any snap judgments. We are going to be well-informed, so we make the correct decisions.
Okay. What else? Any other strengths on the east?
In looking at all the responsibilities, we have to rely on the different other directions in order to make sure we know all of it.
Okay, all right. All right. So, here's the next question. What are the limitations of your style? What are a couple of things that might limit you with the style that you've selected? Just 30, 45 seconds. Turn and talk. All right, 10 more seconds. All right, this time, we're going to start with the north. North, I know you don't think there's any limitations in you, but what are some limitations on your style?
It's, like I said, it's better to ask permission. You also don't want to end up being ready for your aim, which then is kind of, maybe you have to draw people along, or the information is not just too perfect, but incorrect. You don't want to end up-
All right. So, you could make the wrong decision because you're hurrying up. What else? Any else?
There can be casualties of that.
Yeah, you can hurt some feelings.
Hurt some feelings. Some people are too sad, all of it.
Yep.
Overseeing, what are the opinion or attention of what are the stakeholders?
All right. So, have all stakeholders been given opportunity to share an opinion? If you move fast, you might skip that, right? South, what are you thinking? What are some limitations?
I consider it to be time for someone to gain consensus of everyone. And it can be difficult because you know that the back of the wheel.
Okay.
And to be a little more sensitive on the issues. When something other person is saying that. And maybe seem to be able to be influenced because we haven't made a decision in time.
And do you think they worry a little bit?
They worry for, for nothing. Make everybody happy.
They're, they're worried. They're worried. And so, they want things to go slow so they can be very careful about it. All right, how about the east?
So, humility is one. We can, we can agitate people who are looking, want some more nuance, or want to push forward, kind of like pushing on the force.
Yeah.
And get lost in the like, or even turned off by conversations that seem to bring. That was the biggest limitation.
Okay. All right, how about the west? What are some limitations of being in the west?
We talked about paralysis by analysis. So, spending so much time in the details to make sure we know everything and absorb everything. Or this majoring in the minors, right? Like again, spending time.
Right. Yeah.
And then we also talked a little bit about how could possibly limit our ability to be innovative or creative? Because you get used to the details and doing things in one way. And this is how we've come to solve it. And so, we might be limited on our innovation sometimes.
And our way of being on the ground. Okay, okay.
And do you see all the details that we're giving you, right?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. All right, awesome. This is really, you've got to put in good thought into this. What's style now? And don't point at anybody. What style do you find most difficult to work with and why? Just real quickly, what, what's one of the styles you find most difficult to work with? All right, 10 more seconds. Alright, ten more seconds. Alright. You guys got some consensus? Alright, East. Again, reminding you what those are, northeast, southwest. Who do you find to be the most difficult, not the people, but the direction? Which direction?
Uh, we, we, without patience, all of them. We have to bring patience to the game, because, well, we wanna get this thing done, like, well, we need to talk about, then, well, come on, let's go on. We need more deep, come on, let's go on. And then, and then, or, they said, slow down, you know, like, and it's like, when you're thinking about the big picture, unless you're patient.
That, that's a great reflection. Love it. How about y'all on the West? Who do you find most difficult to work with?
Which direction?
I'll say it because these are y'all's more direct. It's, 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 it's the feelers. It's the South.
Yeah.
We have a lot of trouble with, with impact, you know, the feelers, priors, the, you know, we, yeah, we do, but.
Yes, South's picked on a lot. Guys, I do this all over the country. The South, y'all, we need this out. It's on a little bit.
There's a lot in that statement.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. That's not what I meant. Alright, what, what else? What else? What else y'all talked about in terms of the direction? Why is the South difficult to work with?
You said it's just, it's hard because they're in their feelings a lot. It's time-consuming. We can't identify. And then, if we're trying to figure out exactly what the problem is and how we can solve it, and then, you know, we just.
It gets squishy, doesn't it?
And we need to keep going.
Yeah, so when you hear the details, the feelings get a little squishy, and I want signs, I'm on black and white. I wanna make his numbers, right? Okay, South, I already know who I think you're gonna point at, but go ahead. What, what direction? So what are the most natural tensions exist between North and South? And to be honest with you, as a former superintendent, I was on the North, and I did struggle a little bit with the South, right? Because although you want to hear, you want to listen, you also know every decision, and board members in particular, you guys know this. No matter what decision you make, there will always be someone who's disappointed with the decision. And so in your head, if you're on this side, you're trying to do the thing, the math, right, to figure out how am I most proportionately solving this issue to disappoint, not necessarily people's feelings, but to press it up against data and information. And for some people, that bothers them, right? Okay, alright, did I, oh, I asked you guys, who didn't I? Oh, North. So who do you find?
There's much like in North, we all have completely different opinions. Each of us, okay, well, what's your?
I would say a couple, you know, probably South, many areas, and the West, you know, making so many assumptions. We, we like to buy, they, they deal everything with buys and data.
Okay.
Okay. I said East, and that's because the, you have to have some details, is it not? I can't go into it blindly. I wanna go in, I wanna do what I need to do, but I, I got it. So they'll just stay high level, um, yeah.
Alright. I said Carmen. Yeah, no. I think that, that is much more because the, the analysis paralysis in particular.
Yeah, and we're gonna get into just a minute or two sort of that nuance, because it's very important, and I want you to think about how we're distributed right now. Okay, don't respond to that yet, but just be thinking about the distribution of the talent in both the board and the staff. Alright, real quickly, what do people need to know from other directions to work more effectively with you? Okay, so what do the other styles need to know to better work with South, or North, or East, or West? I'll give you one minute to quickly come up with, what do people need to know about you and your style to work effectively with you? Alright, ten more seconds. Alright. So what do other people need to know about your style? Let's start with the South. How to best work with the South is to do what?
He's confident about how we may understand that a decision has to be made, but we are not black and white. We feel as though it's important to bring all of those voices into the room so that a decision can be made that will actually be executed by human people.
Right, and they feel like they own.
Patience and grace.
So you want them to have a little patience and grace in working. Love it. Very good. North?
Come with the timeline, come with the specifics. Don't say nebulous because we have stuff. A project charter, really, really.
What I will say is, I put at least speaking for myself, that's super aware that I'm in the North, and if, and so if I am rubbing you wrong, ask, say, be like, uh, we need to bring other people into the, and, and I, that is a, okay, I'll step back, like, okay, I got it. But that is, that is very much not intuitive to recognize.
Alright, so very important, you know, nuance here. Tell me that I'm going too fast. Tell me to slow down. Have the courage to do that, right? And for the staff, you gotta see where your superintendent is. So the question to the staff is, can you say just what he said, which is, slow down a little bit, we're getting out ahead of ourselves. Right? Okay, very good. Thank you. Did I call on you first? No. West. What do we need to know to work with you?
He said, um, just understand our ability to be details. We want results just like you do, so understand that we're kind of operating with gathering details and then getting to results. Um, and don't be offended, or don't take personally, but be asked for said details.
Alright, let me say that again. Don't take it personally. Now, as a board member, she may ask a lot of questions because her brain is wired to need that level of detail before she's comfortable making a decision. And as a superintendent, we think about, why is it taking someone so long? Why are they asking so many questions? That's natural. That's how she's wired. Okay, so as a board member, we understand that. As a board member, Julia Bernath was my board member. She was at South, and I know for a fact I irritated her because of the speed at which I did work, but she was very experienced and knew how to tell me, just like you asked for. So, we haven't heard enough from the South part of the community. We haven't heard enough about Central, etc. Does that make sense? Alright, East. What? Yep.
Um, we need processing time from others, and similarly to what others have said, don't take it personally. If you don't have the details, it's not that, you don't think they're important, but we are there to deliver the big picture, and we know and trust in the detailed people.
Okay, so they see the big picture. I will say, this group on the East does tend to do big picture, but they come down periodically to look at the middle and then go back up. They may not go all the way into the weeds. It's a very interesting group, and people in this space tend to be very strategic. See the big picture, come to the middle, and then hand off the details to the other side to figure back out. Okay? Alright, real quickly, last one. What do you value about the other three styles? So I talked with you about what you didn't like, how difficult they were. Really, what I wanted to do now is, as you think about these four uh, areas, what do you value about each of the ones you're not in? Hey, fifteen more seconds. What do you value about each of the three that you're not part of? Alright, this time we're gonna start with the North. North members, what do you value about each of the other three directions?
Uh, I think I, I started to talk about how all it would be to manage a team of all ourselves. Uh, so I mean, it is critical to have people that, right, otherwise, the work actually doesn't get done, right? Nobody's there to execute the decisions that you've made. Uh, we talked a lot about the South. It is a gap on, on this side, and so there is, there's a natural recognition that y'all aren't able missing something, and we don't even know what's missing.
That's what I think you guys do in a job like you, you are the community. Right? We're not making widgets. We're, we're, we're shaping hearts and minds and educating children. Right? Awesome. Let's do the South. What do you value about the other three?
Um, the North, I do value their ability to get it done. I will never, I always trust that the North will get, will get it done.
What about the other two? What do you value about?
Uh, we value the detail because, um, you know, it's important, and has to be done, it's probably the most important piece of it all. But actually, we value that it's that, so we always, we always think about.
Let me ask, you're a board member, right? Uh, as a board member, you're kind of a fiduciary. You need to make sure stuff is being done right. Where's your chief financial officer? Will you raise your hand? Is that where we want her?
Absolutely.
Isn't that where we want her?
Absolutely.
Yeah, why? Because she needs to watch every nickel and dime and make sure that we're following local, state, and national policies on money. Right? Right? So it's an important role. You may not wanna get into the weeds about that, but you have to be able to hire somebody and trust that they do.
Absolutely.
Right? Okay. Y'all on this side, on the East?
Yeah, we, I mean, doing our, not speculating with the picture, without the best, without caring for the people policy is doing, right? So having things get done to figure out what is working, what isn't it? It's just blocking us, right? It's just sitting around on different day. And that's, I mean, you, you need to think about, we definitely need to be going in the direction, but part of being able to take a style of leadership is having faith. Like, we've got the data, we got the need, we got the how. We've concluded people, you know, being driven.
They need, but we said, we're glad that you have the big picture, you keep the big picture in mind, and keep us on top.
Alright, so West, what do you value about the other?
Um, well, we value them because they look at the big picture, so stay out of our way. Um, they get the job done, and the results get the job done, and, um, they keep us grounded in both.
Yep, very powerful. Alright, just a couple of things that think about, you don't need to talk out loud about it, and then we're gonna have a seat. Note the distribution of the directions and what that might mean. I see two board members here. I see one board member here. I see one board member here, and I see one here. That's a pretty balanced team. Right? And so it's true, if all five of the board members were here, it would be a very different stylistic board of government, right? Same thing with the South. What is the best combination for a group to have? Yep, I think a balanced group. This is probably y'all, one of the most balanced I've seen. How do you be, how can you avoid being driven crazy by another direction? And that is your communication and teamwork, and understanding the value that everybody brings. And then how might you all think about using an exercise like this, and looking really for the staff, as you work with your own personal teams? Your principals, your directors, your assistant directors, etc., and understanding the value of a balanced team. And the last comment I'll say is this, on HR, you said something very powerful, which is this notion of a balanced team and not being, you know, sometimes Norths irritate Norths because they're like, wanna do the things that people want to do quickly. Our hiring practices, we talk a lot about hiring, making sure that we think about diversity, we think about experience. I would also ask you to contemplate how your hiring practices might actually influence the development of team. And that, if I'm a North, I tend to like to maybe hire Norths. So it's important that you've got a South on a committee, you've got an East on a committee, and a West on a community, a committee, as we make decisions. Does that make sense? Alright, let's take, if you don't mind, just a quick check email. Can you use the restroom, take maybe about a five-minute stretch for you to get an understanding of? And then we'll be right back. That was what's not, you, you guys are always very, um, have the right people. We're seeing the brains, and that's what we're.
A governance team, thank you. Also, we will do some next steps ourselves. Um, all the work is not done, and so we need to be able to move forward too. Everything is always going to be grounded in our strategic plan. And so today, we will focus heavily on student success in all areas as the strategic accelerator. I know as a part of this accelerator, we need to increase Georgia milestone proficiency. And so the first question I always have is, and I do have questions, even though I'm over there. I'm over there in the North. I do have questions. And I do ask a lot of them, ask them. Uh, but the question is, where are our students performing? Why are our students performing there? And what do we need to do to ensure that there is a change in that performance? And so those are the types of things that really, if I'm gonna say I'm gonna increase student achievement, increase the proficiency of our students, that's where that lives. And in order to do that, we have to stay in that. So what did our principals do? Last Wednesday at Fave, uh, we pulled together the principal as well as their member of their team. I let them select. Some of them brought an assistant principal, most of them really brought an instructional coach, because that's the person that really takes the deep dive into the classrooms on a consistent basis. They're the person that is supposed to do that. So we came together, and it was facilitated by Karen and also Frances, and what we did was, we took them through the exact same process you will do today at, at a more detailed level. Principals came with the pre-work. They looked at their data, just like you had pre-work. You looked at the data. In addition, we talked about the teacher practice. What is happening in the classrooms? What is that problem of practice, and how does it need to be? What is that problem of practice and how does it need to be addressed? Then, if this is a student, what does the teacher need to do, what does the coach need to do, what does the principal need to do? And then how are you going to get it done? So that's what the principals did, and guess what? You're gonna do a little bit of that as well. So we started with the root cause. And we all know, Dr. Sultan knows this most readily in what she does in her day-to-day. So a lot of times, people aren't feeling well. So you, you might have someone that says, oh, I have a sore throat. So let me go get some throat lozenges, let me go and gargle with some Listerine, let me go gargle with some salt water, oh, I have a fever, let me take a Tylenol. All of those things, you're only treating the what? Only treating the symptoms. How will I know that it's actually strep throat?
Run a test.
I gotta run a test. And then, the results of that test tells you that I should do what? Probably get an antibiotic. If I didn't ever go get that strep, strep throat test, what would potentially happen if I just let it prolong and I never got to the root cause to go, huh?
Scarlet fever.
Scarlet fever? Oh, yeah, I actually had that as a child. That same year that my mother died when I was sixteen, it was very interesting. Like, it's not fun at all, but I did have scarlet fever. Um, it can, it can bother your kidneys.
Kidney failure.
Kidney failure.
Joint problems, pndis, all kinds of problems.
All of those things. That is what happens if you don't get to the root cause and you just over-medicate with running to the grocery store or potentially what you do not, you know, that's what can happen. So you must get to the root cause. That's the exact same thing that we talked about with our leaders, so. Some of the core principles are there for you. I'm not gonna read all of them for you, but when you're getting and talking about root cause analysis, it's there. What I like to tell principals is you have gotten probably to a root cause when you see yourself in the mirror. Because as the leader, the question is, what system, what process, what is it that you are missing and not monitoring or not doing? When you, when you identify that, you've gotten to the root cause, you're taking ownership of it. And so that's when, cause you could just stay on the surface, you could talk about things you can't control. Like, I can't control the pollen, I can't control other factors that could aggravate it, but what do I need to do to make a difference? I can't control the home, I can't control all of those things, but what can I do in this building? What can we do as a governance team to ensure that our students are achieving? So, this is a great way, um, called a five Y protocol, which is you ask the question five times to hopefully get close to a root cause. So, you were issued a moving citation by the traffic police. Why did that happen? Why were you speeding?
I was late.
Why were you late? Why did you have to feed the dog?
Because my kids didn't.
Were we, why didn't your kids feed the dog?
Because I don't stay on them enough about what their responsibilities are.
Oh, why don't you stay on them enough about why, what their responsibilities are in the home?
So just don't feel like I'm being a nag.
Oh. So is it the policeman or police person's fault that you have the citation? It's not, whose fault is it?
Is it mine?
Can you blame the dog?
Yes.
No, can you blame the children? Can you blame the children?
No.
No.
It's my.
It's your fault. So even as something as little as why you received that citation, you're, as a South person, you're thinking through, I don't wanna be a nag, I don't want them to have to complain that I'm always nagging, but you are now creating a different condition for yourself. And we're not gonna turn this into a conversation. But, yeah, we can, we can go there. But I say that to say, going all the way to the Y on something as light as I received a citation, really just asking why five times. Get on, thank you, and it was not rehearsed, okay? So now, let's look at our milestone proficiency. And so through Georgia Insights, you have an opportunity to look at all districts, but specifically, you can also look at the city schools of Decatur, and you can begin to drill down. So you have received, and I gave you a larger copy, if you will, of our data by cohort, which is not necessarily what is always or typically explained. And we'll talk a little bit about why. So now, this board has said very loudly and very clearly, there is an achievement gap between the performance of our black students and their white peers. I heard that, we know that. But the question would be, why are you not looking at this data year over year? But I am looking at this data specifically for cohorts for a couple of reasons. One, year-over-year data, that's very good for a leader and a principal to look at because they can start to look at what's happening specifically in seventh grade math. And you can look at that team and say, does this team get it done? But for me, I need to look at this data in a cohort level because I need to look at the trends and patterns of what each student is doing. So when I think about our district, we do not have an enormous mobility issue. I.e., our students are pretty much with us for a long period of time. So the question would be, if their performance is like this in 2023, what did that same student look like in 22, in 21? 2020 never existed. 19, and I can see that, especially going all the way to our ninth graders. And did the gap grow? Did the graph close? Which grade levels, which grade bands? All of that makes sense to me when I start to look at it from a cohort perspective. So now, cohort analysis. And obviously the gap. So, at this point, I want you to turn into your participant guide. You're actually going to, um, look at, you have three questions. Those three questions on page two. What do you see in the data? Of course, at this point, we're only looking at math. Avoid judgment. Just go ahead and tell me what you see in the data. You have a little bit of a, you know, cheat sheet, and that you have some headlines on the right side. But tell me what you see in this data.
North.
North. Give them a moment.
Think about your first word.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So what are some of the things that you see in our math data?
The drop-off for black students in current sixth is the, just visually, the graph stands out the most. I mean, you compare that to an increase for the white students across the same band, that's kind of
What do you see in this data? In math?
I do see in the sixth grade band at 22, the 23 numbers are better than 22.
Okay.
For sixth grade.
For sixth grade?
For sixth grade, so there was some growth there.
Okay.
But then there was, there was another drop in seventh grade. And a drop in eighth. So all the other grades actually dropped from the year before. Also noticed the significant loss from 2020, you know, we really didn't kinda have, but 2019 to 2021, there are some significant gaps there.
I see where, if we look at just all, if we don't dissect the race data, we're consistently above almost sixty percent proficient. So if we just report that to school district, it's like it's doing well. So I can see where in the past, maybe we've been selling that, and that's where, uh, it's, it's been a little disingenuous, but if you pull that apart, look at these two cohorts, the white students are, in some years, like if you look at sixth graders, in all these years reported, there, the white students are above seventy percent proficient, but then you can look at, there's only one year, I think it's 2021, where you have black students that are above fifty percent proficient. And so, um, I think there's lies, lies, and statistics, it depends on how you report this. We can easily bait the district of what is, uh, who are performing, but really you have a subset of populations that are consistently underperforming um, across all years and across all grades. Um, and then I think within that, the current ninth graders, I think, makes me very concerned here. These are students that are in high school, um, and they're hanging out all years, 2021, 2022, 2023. Um, they're below the thirty percent mark.
Yep, so when I think about 2019, 2021, 2022, 2023, what's happening?
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if you look at the group of kids moving through the grades, which is, I think, what you mean to say.
Cohort.
The, there's no, there actually isn't great improvement, and in a couple of areas, there's a pretty significant decrease. Um, we consistently have a forty-point or higher difference uh, I mean, across the board with the performance between our black students and our white students. So there, there's clearly an issue with that as well. There isn't great trend data in this information in the sense that it's pretty highly inconsistent, whether you look at a cohort or just by race or just over time, it's kind of all over the map, which tells me that.
You're going to the second question. That tells me, so we're gonna pause, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I wanna pause you to allow everyone now to go to that second question. Because the North has done what the North does and just goes all in. But talk about what that data suggests. Give you an opportunity to record, what does this data suggest for us? What does the data suggest? As we know, Dr. Sultan is truly everything. What does the data suggest? Here we go.
We need more data, um, we need the next level down, we need to be able to break it into smaller cohorts, we need to see it more over time. That we need to be able to identify where, what the trends are to help us with some of the root cause analysis. I, I think we have a visibility issue in, I mean, aside from the big picture, which is we straight up have a equity issue here. To be able to point to exactly what is driving that issue is difficult with the variability of the data. And I wanna get down to kind of the next level.
Stop reading my notes. Those are my notes. We do need, I need to be able to cross-section and look and go deeper and not do this in just, you know, what Georgia Insights provides. But we keep data on our students and our student information system in a different way that I would be able to even give us a greater level of detail so that I can ensure we're making the right decisions, which will be the ask around data warehousing and data visualization tools, because this is a very laborious manual process, but I digress. All right, going on to this same question, what does the data suggest?
So I would make an assumption that something happens between eighth grade and ninth grade in math, because everybody's numbers fail, right? With the 2022 numbers, that's when they would have been in eighth grade, correct? So it just seems like this stuff.
And, and part of that is who is taking the, the, the class in ninth grade. Once again, there are, there are different layers to the data, so this came up yesterday at Beacon. Which math class am I going to be in if I am one level versus if I'm enhanced versus if I'm above grade level and who is taking which exams?
And it changes it too.
It changes, and it's changing right now. But all of that is, once again, things that the data are suggesting. Other questions?
I would like to see, we've seen this before, it was a couple of years ago, but the breakdown was economically. Um, because it really, it really shined a light on our numbers because the narrative is, if you come from the lower income, that's, that's just the narrative, that that's probably what the problem is. And that is not the problem.
Is the, the com, is it compounding the problem? Or is that just a symptom? Or is that root cause? All of those are, all of that is, once again, I need to see that data, but I can't see that data in what Georgia Insights provides. If I had additional information, I could see that right now. Now, I could see If I had additional information, I could see that right now. Now I could see socioeconomic status from literacy at, via Georgia Insight, but not even on the assessment that they just took. I, that's going back to twenty nineteen. But we're not, we don't tag it in what we do, because we don't have the data warehouse system to do it ourselves. What data is this? What is this?
We need to maybe turn back the clock a couple of years and see what's going on at Tally and State, because some of our sixth graders maybe are not coming in with the skills that they need to sustain themselves through middle school. Because you can see that sixth graders, what were our twenty twenty-one sixth graders, come in at about fifty, fifty-five percent proficiency, then they become twenty twenty-two seventh grader, then they fall off. And then they can't rebound. And math is one of those foundational skills that continues to build itself. So, um, what's going on if my third, fourth grade whereby they're not coming in either prepared to take the test? Or they don't have some of those foundational skills. Um, so something I think is going on before we're even getting to this point is that they're kind of in the upper elementary, fourth and fifth grades. Um, but what I s- see here is that, um, you have white students that are able to, you know, even kind of like Jane has said, there, even some of the white students have a little bit of a drop off, but they're able to sustain themselves above fifty percent. But then something happens kind of around that seventh and eighth grade, but I think some of the, some of the RCA needs to be in the upper elementary grades around the fourth and fifth grade with what they're coming in with.
Could it be the transfer from ELM too?
So we, we're about to do that. But what I will say is I agree for real estate purposes and to look at trends. Uh, we did not put fourth and fifth grade on there just because it's a snapshot, but you do have some of that information in your, in your possession. And then finally.
He's dying. Well, I was gonna comment on what Carmen actually just made. If you look at twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. We have a thirty-ish point, twenty-ish point drop in the black students, but the white students actually have a ten, tenish or so point improvement. So we, we do actually see the, an increase on the white students and a pretty dramatic drop on the black students who had that shift from, from twenty-one to twenty-two. Yeah, through the gap.
Through the gap.
Yeah, the, the, the data suggests that if it's purely equity placement trends for black students differentiate themselves during sixth and seventh grade, right? Like sixth grade, the line for all in white is flat or up, black is down for black and for seven. All is slightly down, white is up, and then black is kind of up and down. And so it suggests that if, if I wanted to dig deep, what we're doing, teach differently and consistently, this is the word consistency is a run right, you know, and that sort of stuff. In those grades and up to those grades. I mean, listen, the, the overall ups and downs in the current ninth graders, that's unfortunate, but it's statistically similar. So that jumps out to me, suggests to me that that's the problem. That's the problem.
The significance. And I think you all have answered the last question, which is what does this really mean for all these, all? We're all in indicator. What does this really mean? We still have some equity work to do. But this equity work is going to be a little different, because it's gotta hit outcomes. Gotta hit numbers. Okay. Switch. Turn over. ELM. Same process. We'll go through this a little more quickly. So just go ahead and do all of your three questions. And then we'll debrief. Maybe about another thirty seconds. All right. What does, what do you see in the data first? What do you see in the data? For ELA?
Black kids in seventh, eighth and ninth are struggling pretty, pretty, pretty hard in the setting. Consistently under even forty, thirty-five, thirty.
But then something happens in their transition from eighth to ninth grade, they had an increase. Um, and everybody did.
Anyone else want to tell me what they see?
The twenty twenty-two ninth graders, what grade are they in now?
Twenty twenty-two ninth graders are now in, they're currently, yeah, go on, they're currently in.
Yeah, one piece of fear is if you look at their current ninth.
They're currently in ninth.
On current ninth, this is twenty twenty. So that's their, that would from eighth grade as well. That's their, it is their eighth grade.
Right, okay.
The grade bar is their seventh grade.
Got it.
And for their sixth grade, they were out of COVID in fifth grade, so the new bar is twenty nineteen, they're fourth.
Got it. So, okay.
So, just in general, I would, I would say if we, if you all want us to look at this in cohorts, the cohort should be constant colors across rather than.
It's changing by the year.
Yeah, make, make the, you can have a color, yeah, right. Cohort should be a single color. Um, I, I am seeing that we have the same pervasive, similarly sized gap between white student performance and black student performance. When you take a look at, at the cohorts, uh, from twenty-one to twenty-three, starting in the sixth grade, it's relatively flat, little fluctuations for the white students, but it's a consistent decline for the black students over that same period of time. Um, and, and so this one actually does have a trend and it's a trend down for the performance of the black students. Uh, but this, I mean, okay, so I won't jump ahead. I'll stop right.
Okay. Anyone want to share what it suggests? We can jump ahead, do a second time.
I, I mean, the same issue with the other data is that there's, you just need the next level of information. But in, in this case, where you do have a pretty consistent trend over the period, uh, over these students, uh, in ELA, I, I mean, what drives that trend? Like, why do we consistently see every year of a five-ish percent or so decline in the performance of that cohort of, of black students?
So I'm going to tell you that in your participant guide, you have a lot of additional data. So on the paper, the packet you're writing, starting, I believe it's on page four. You have it, that now it's going to what you were writing on before, but you were looking at, you know, now it's that whole packet of data. It, I'm giving you more of what it looks like even at the elementary level. What does it look like over time, starting by grade level, by all of these other environments? So right now you were just looking at race, black and white. But we know there are more than one race in our district. It's very interesting, multiracial for our district is very close to the way they perform to white versus what black does and how black performs. So if you look on the further pages, they start on page four and it goes all the way to page seventeen. You have all the other races. Certain years, the number of Hispanic students are so small that it's not even a subgroup for us. Um, you can see it by gender. You can see the other races. You can see other learning environments. And you can look at this data year over year, subgroup by subgroup. But all of those weeds, that's not where we need to be as a board. As a board, as a governance team, we need to stay at a higher level. So that we can ultimately come up with the true theory of action that is going to bring about change in performance for our children. But know that it's my philosophy that school leaders, the instructional cabinet, people in our buildings, our teachers, they have to know this, because this makes it actionable for them. I now see, and I now have this fifth grade class in front of me, and I need to know what they performed like in fourth grade. And when I look at, look at the makeup of this class, I need to make instructional decisions based upon that. You don't have to stay in those weeds, but I leave me for you to know that I am in those weeds. I expect them to be in those weeds. So that we can make a difference for our students. So our leaders took a look at their weeds. The leaders also conducted a root cause. So now, not focusing on the weeds, but only focusing on that ELA and that math. What do we think? What is our root cause? And our problem for practice, significant underperformance of our black students in comparison with their white peers. We did a, an example of a citation. You actually have this in your participant guide. So if you continue past all of that data, that's going to break your heart. So go ahead and move past it in your participant guide. Turn to page eighteen. Eighteen, just keep going.
Last question that fascinates me. So when we're looking at race by ELA and we're measuring ninth graders as they move along. Why aren't we measuring how the cohort moves along in terms of the gap? Because that seems far more relevant. So like I just, I wrote down like, this year the gap was forty-one and now it's thirty-seven and now it's thirty-four. And so the gap has gotten smaller over those three years. If you just look at current ninth graders.
When, when it comes to creation of targets.
Yeah.
That's when you will determine how are you going to create that goal to close gaps? So when I've worked with teachers in the past and Jennifer, for example, was one of my principals. When she was my principal at a Title One, what was your percentage of black students? Ninety-five percent black students, full Title One school. I needed her to look at the cohort of her third graders or fourth graders and her fifth graders. And we created her goals based upon the cohorts of students. I expect the current fourth graders to perform at blank at the end of this milestone. And I used it based upon their third grade scores. So when you're talking about the support, the pressure and the transparency, that accountability part, that accountability really goes in the cohort lump. Which is where the leaders have to stay.
Yeah.
We have to go all the way out and we think year over year and things of that nature.
So let me ask, what I'm asking clarification on is when you tell her, I need your fourth grade students to be at this level, that's based on this, this data here is historically where all fourth grade students been. But the way you described it, it sounded like you were saying these fourth graders, based on the data we have of them as third graders, based on the data, but that's not how it's being presented here, but that is how it's.
That's how, that's how you ensure growth occurs.
Right.
You look at it in a cohort level. What typically is presented in the public is year over year, not looking at the specific student, but looking at, oh, where do your third graders, what is your overall third grade reading proficiency? And you just say, oh, last year it was at sixty-six. This year it's at sixty-seven. Well, it's a different group of kids.
Yeah.
If I want to ensure growth, I need to go cohort and Dr. Bosse.
No, just to add something. So, uh, who did pronounce the name he was talking? So think about it this way. Um, SAT school, right? Last year our SAT score averaged with eleven. Um, two years from now, our SAT score drops to ten fifty. We make an assumption that that drop is giant or so. What you don't know is that the cohort sphere is different, which means it may have been an influx of English language learners. We may have actually tested more kids that were, and that's a good thing for equity, because we want to make sure all children get an opportunity. So do you see the nuance there? And so you've got to be able to move in and out of this cohort model versus year over year, because the third grade score that you're looking at are not the same kids.
Right.
And in some schools, that changes dramatically. Um, if you have that, boundaries, the ELL students, more children, uh, living in poverty.
Yeah. So your point over time, you could say, man, they always fall off in third grade regardless of what happens. That's a problem. That's an issue. Or we could say, man, this group of tenth graders was really impacted by the pandemic. And to look at it the first way is really doing a disservice to those teachers, to the growth, the gap.
Exactly. And it's reported out, but when COVID season, it doesn't come with this permission. So you help each other, your communities about this, go help with that. And with the teachers facing, I'm a fifth grade teacher, I'll give the results back and I'll send it back to my kids. Some of you have to do that with fractions. So I'm going to make sure that the sixth grader, if you know, if there's a gap there and I'm going to better try to learn my views and find out and better instruct their new practice. So it doesn't have to be.
And because of the, and because of the pandemic, I've heard from the community that they want to know the impact of the pandemic on the children. That has come up in, in many of the listening sessions. It came up even yesterday, but specifically in pertaining to special education students or students with disabilities. But they have asked, what has the pandemic and how has it impacted our children over time?
And the last point is what I'm seeing nationally is that one of the most impacted groups were the ninth grader sitting in algebra one geometry that didn't get a lot of face to face. There's so many gaps now, but they move into altitude, the culture as well. There's so many gaps now that they move into altitude, the culture thing as well. And so what we see there is that some of those, when you saw that your, in some cases both white and non-white students had about the same flow. The white students recovered more quickly than our, um, their, their counterparts.
Yep.
So the question is, what can we do to fill that gap with, considering some of that?
Exactly. So we're going to go to the actual root cause. High level, obviously you haven't been in the classrooms and all of those sorts of things. But based upon this problem statement, why do you have significant underperformance between our black students and our white students, their white peers? Why?
We allow them to fail year over year. They have the same performance. This, this pattern repeats itself.
All right. We allow them to fail year over year. Why do we allow them to fail year over year?
Stereotype.
Okay.
I was, I was going to broadly say the, yeah, the stereotypes have an impact on not approaching or approaching.
See, now I was thinking about the article.
The opportunity myth, right? Okay. So, so go on, tell, tell me more.
Lower teacher expectations.
Lower teacher.
Based on income, whether they have an IP. Um, there are different, a variety of different reasons why there are lower teacher expectations for black students. Particularly within this district, because such a significant number come from public housing. And so I've, I have personally heard you to say, no, they come from a single parent family. So that, that drops expectations right there. They come from low income families, that drops some. And if you have these, you know, multiple identities.
Is compounded.
Yeah.
So why, so wait, wait, wait. Why, uh huh, hmm. Give me a why. Why is it that I have lower expectations for that student that has that mo- multiple profiles?
Stereotypes because inherent bias, society has told us that, that if you are black and you're poor, you're done. And you can't succeed. So why bother?
Okay.
But I just, I just, just as a footnote, this is a footnote. I've always had some inherent trouble with understanding that about decatur specifically because this is an area where not everybody who is black is impoverished, you know what I mean? So while I do believe that that is the case here, a lot of our black students are, there is the association between poverty, lack of opportunity and, and children of color. I know because I live with several, uh, young women of color that they often are not impoverished. And I think that's the case with a lot of, a lot of students here that are within this cohort. So I don't want us to, I don't want us to be the victims of that same bias. But we are thinking that the reason that these, we're seeing this is because of lack of financial means. Because not all of those kids are.
No, no, not at all. Dr. Bosse.
People are often in these problems. See, let me tell you what I've been in Palm Beach. I've never seen such low expectation in my life at work before the. I asked my staff to answer the question. If poverty is in fact the perfection to low achievement, why are my white third grade boys living in poverty, outperforming my non Title One black cohort? I showed the, the white core kids and the black non-core kids and the white core kids were outperforming their counterparts. And that was to get back to the root cause. And we get an analysis with NYU, our teachers had an incredibly low expectation for our students. They didn't think they could do it. Now I will say our system in Palm Beach was eighty-four percent white middle-class women. And I'm not trying to peg this on any particular group, but when you start thinking about bias and whether it's inherent or not, are we inadvertently lowering standards? I mean, that's the question you have to drop.
And I would say that I gave you the opportunity myth to read. Because what the opportunity myth says, the inherent bias that is being brought is impacting what you teach and how you teach it. How you discipline as well. I'm just in the achievement data though, but we'll get there in the discipline. I said that school will be another day to deep dive, but not today. So opportunity myth says that there, the students aren't being taught on grade level standards. And they're not necessarily being taught that bell to bell from the time they enter the building to the time that they leave. And what they are teaching them is not at the standard or right rigor or the assignment is not at the rigor of what they think everyone or the specific those students that you mentioned, uh, Jana, are, can do. So when I think about what we need to do, I really need to look at the grade level standards. The grade level standards are what they are tested on. And you have to look at whether or not those grade level standards are actually what we're planning with. And is that actually the instruction that is happening? And is that exactly what the relevant assessment says? Or are we testing something else? And relevant assessment is another piece that you've lift, lifted in all indicator in the strategic plan. And opportunity myth tells us that.
I was also going to say that, that article talked about how teachers have been, if it's possible, over taught scaffolding, which ends up some of the standards get lost, the rigor of the standards gets lost. And I, and I, I mean, I know that as a special ed teacher, because I'm trying to make these modifications and everything. And when I read that, I was like, oh, I've been guilty of that.
Yes.
Um.
It's hard not to be. It's hard not to be.
Yeah. Cause you, I'm trying to like make the, I'm trying to make the work accessible. But then, you know, when they're reading To Kill a Mockingbird at eighth grade and my students' IP's are on a third grade reading level, even with the graphic novel is a challenge. And so, uh, so I'm now getting, I'm feeling kind of emotional about it.
Yeah, no, but it is. Opportunity myth will go to your core of what you believe about students and what you do in that classroom every single day. And whether or not what you do in that classroom really is good for all students. So we're going to move quickly. So what did our leaders do? Our leaders did a couple of things. They started with the students. They said, so our students would be able to achieve at a high level. What do they need to do? Who is it then? The teachers. And our leaders wrote down what the teachers needed to do. And if it were going to be what the teachers were going to do, you then had to say, well, what's the other adult in the place? The instructional coach, what does that instructional coach need to do? But what's the other adult in the place? It's the principal and the assistant principal, what do they need to do? And guess what? They scripted it. So that the students will be able to demonstrate high growth on the STAR assessment and achieve proficiency or, or above on Algebra One EOC. What do the teachers need to do? Then what does the instructional coach need to do? Then let me pull out the mirror. Principal, what do I need to do to make sure all of that happens? But now it's time for us to think about it the same way. Because when, after they came up with that, I talked to them about a DINE. And a DINE is a methodology that I've used year over year, which is after you've determined what you need to do, how are you going to do it? What do you ultimately? What does success look like? How are you going to measure that? How are you going to do it? So number one, what do you need to design? What system, what structure, what needs to be done? How are you going to implement it? And then how are you going to monitor it? Finally, when are you going to think about? After you're looking at the results of this progress monitoring, where do you need to course correct and evaluate what you're, what you've already done? So good analysis has to be actionable analysis. Same thing for us. When I was with you back in February, that slide might look familiar. It's all the way up there. But I told you as a board and actually I gave the cabinet, the peak behind that curtain last week and I shared with them my ninety day plan. I said, this is what I told the board and this is probably why you feel like you're running at the pace you're running, especially because I'm the only one over there besides Sergio and everyone else is over here. So they were like, oh, I'm tired. Well, that's why. Because this is what I believe. This is what I believe about leaders and the systems and structures that need to be in place to hold them accountable. And this is what I believe about the cabinet and what needs to be in place to hold them accountable. These are the systems I will design. This is what will be implemented. They know that they meet with me weekly and you all see it in my calendar. And I'm evaluating and looking at what did you tell me you were going to do last week and did it get done? And what are you going to do this week? And is it all aligned? That's the structure. And now it's time for me to dine, if you will, and you have a dime. So in, in your pocket and I gave a dime to all of the principals. So they all received their dime and now board, you have your dime, even in a coins shortage. What it is that we need to do. So what do I need to do? One, I need to design some common commitments that will refocus us on Georgia's standards of excellence. What is it that they're teaching? Need to ensure that we have a professional learning calendar that reflects the problems, the practice that the principals identify. I need to ensure that we have a data review calendar. I need to ensure that we have interoperable data systems. What Hans said was, I want to know more about this data. I want to know more about what these students know and don't know. And I can't really give him that right now because we don't have an interoperable data system. All of those pages that you received in that additional handout, that was staff pecking in Excel.
Really sorry.
That's not the great use of a cabinet member's time. No, not. Also, I need a two-year literacy plan. I said two year, not one year. Cause we have to go through the change management cycle. It's not something that can just change. And also these achievement gap partnerships. There are partners in across the nation that will help partner with us. And we need to bring them in and help them help us do this work. Then here's the implementation. These are the systems and structures that I utilize to make sure those things happen. This is when the monitoring is when you obviously will hear and learn about all indicator and those data points on a quarterly basis, starting with November with that baseline data. Also professional learning surveys at the end of every professional learning, I ask that we use the same four questions. The relevancy of the professional learning, the content and understanding the applicability and whether or not you can use what you've learned. And then finally, those one-on-ones. I spend a lot of time with cabinet because I have high expectations for them. And then finally, those, um, the, the times in which I will reevaluate, we will reevaluate where we're done. You did have a theory, a, a theory of action and I will say thank you, um, Chair Herndon for sending that. When I looked at the theory of action, it's not the right theory of action. I think we need to revisit it as a governance team based upon the data that we're seeing now. And based upon what we even heard in that group calls, what we know about opportunity myth, where we see once we actually can really see this data. So we have quarterly retreats. So our next quarterly retreat, I think will be in November. It's quite possible that we could do theory of action at that point. Um, we'll, we'll see. Closing thoughts. So your last page and your participant guide. I want you to go ahead and complete those, which are one, three things that you learned today. Two questions that you still have. And then finally, one thing that resonated with you. Three things that you learned today, two questions that you still have and one piece that resonated with you. I would love for you to share the piece that resonated with you.
I'm sure one, that the data systems that we currently have are not interoperable. And that we need more data to, to really be able to understand, um, where our problems are.
Awesome. Thank you.
What resonated with you?
That was my fault when I got the.
She really does.
What resonated with you?
Um, we've, we've really been talking about moving the needle on. We haven't been talking about root cause and getting down at the level of necessary detail to move the needle on, on equity. I think we've been, we've been committed to it. We've talked about it as a system for a long time. We've put a lot of resources against it. Uh, it is certainly an imperative this entire board feels in previous. And previous superintendents have felt, we never talked about it at this level, at this level of breakdown depth and even recognizing that we're not deep enough. Um, yeah, so.
That reminds me of the, when I took the first course at GSBA with Glenn on this subject, and we were really starting to dive into it as it were, and the different levels, um, uh, equity work. And how sometimes, you know, as soon as we started talking about equity work, we wanted all the things just to, to happen. But there had to be a process, like all of the classes that all the teachers do, that had to happen first, so that they can learn their bias. And, and a lot of the community was like, I mean, we're core staff, but that had to happen. And so all of these layers had to happen in order for us to get to this layer directly, to the root cause. We couldn't have had this root cause conversation three years ago. Um, I mean, the board might have been ready, but the community wasn't ready. The staff wasn't ready. Um, and so I think it is very on time with, with, if we look at the calendar of where we are in equity, to really be talking about the root cause. And this is the, this is also the painful part. Uh, and the part where we will start to see some community members and parents who have been supportive of this work start to wane on this work. And we've already started seeing that when we got that report from the high school. And there were two suggestions that money should go toward more, more equity work specific to the high school. And overwhelmingly, we heard, we don't need to put any more money in that way. Overwhelmingly, we need to start doing this, and we need to start putting money here, and we've done enough. So, um, I think we're right on time with where we are uh, as far as getting to the group class, but it's going to be pretty painful, I think, for the next, the next year.
Um, I think the first thing is that I don't think you can blame this all on COVID. I think it's time to stop, uh, uh, getting on this like train of this is the pandemic, that the pandemic, that if you look at the current ninth graders, which this is, the current ninth graders are, they're black ninth graders. I think I want, that, that these words are heartbreaking. Um, I think kind of like, uh, was said here, they probably had some dips with the pandemic. People just have to breathe out, but they were already struggling. So I think we need to put out there that all of these problems are not related to, uh, the pandemic. They were the problems that have been unmasked or admitted, like, but they are not into it solely. Uh, like Tasha said, it's not to really, um, highlight, uh, the discrepancies that were all in there. Um, even see where in twenty nineteen, this was at thirty percent efficiency, that was before. So I also think just in looking at the patternality, just if you look, if you just look at the pattern of these scores, there's a connection between, um, the reading and the math scores. If you can't read the reading maths, then you cannot answer the question. So, um, I think if we, as we go through this, um, realize that if the math department and the weekly department can work together to challenge these students to, uh, to do more challenging reading work so that they can do more challenging math work, the wise vacation, maybe they could not operate in a solo. Um, but I think there is a correlation here, but I don't think this is all because of COVID. I think COVID made it worse, but it was serious.
Thanks. What, what resonates with you?
I think the thing that sticks out is, it sounded like Oz was saying, like, well, Dan, but a lot of work to do on data, gathering it, asking the right questions. And I'm kind of sick of sitting through these and having follow-up data questions or being difficult to isolate, figure stuff out. And, and not just gathering data, but like how we present it, how we're to put out there in the world to teachers, to the community, to the principals.
It, so I thank you all for what resonated. One, you will, I'm gonna, I will come with an ask. I've kind of talked to you individually about it. But mid-year, I need, I need a real data system in our district. It's twenty twenty-three. A real, true data system, true visualizations, true understanding, not literally someone taking an Excel spreadsheet and manipulating. The second piece of that is what you said about COVID and what you said about expectations. Realize the opportunity net was written in twenty eighteen. You said it, Tasha. It, it's COVID exacerbated physically whatever illness you already had. And guess what? It did the same thing in achievement. The great thing about it is we're here right now with this junction, in this junction, ready to create a new theory of action with a strategic plan that says we are going to refocus on our students. We will have skilled readers at third grade. We are going to have success in all areas for our students. They are going to be safe, seen, and successful. And we have a team that's here to do it. So although it's very silvering, it always is. But we can now say we need, we know where the issues are. And it's the what? We have focused a lot on the how, meaning how it's happening in the classroom, but I have to refocus them on the what. And there will be the accountability side of it. So the equity hard work, actually, I was in here where this one, I learned about this room, when we had beyond diversity training with Dr. Huddleston, well, Dr. Huddleston didn't leave it, lead it, actually courageous conversations. They came in and I was here for that two-day training. It was here. That compass of knowing what you think, what you believe, and what you feel, all are foundational to who you are. But I'm here to hold you accountable for what you do for kids. That's the shift in the work that we're about to engage by. Where you were and your thoughts, your feelings, and your, your thoughts, your feelings, and your beliefs, that hard work has been done. That's the mindset shift. And if their minds have not shifted, so be it. But I need all these for kids to. All right? We gotta take a little break, probably maybe get a little lunch, you know, drink some water. That, and that's exactly what the cabinet feels like at the end of the meeting. Right? That, that's me. We're here for kids.
I'm a little bit, we could probably turn it up just a little bit.
You know, I didn't bring my extras. I dropped the half extra. I do, I do. Okay.
Oh, yeah, they were talking about you all when the last, it was so cold.
It was.
Both, they were like, we should be more like Jenny, as always.
And I, and I thought about which one went bad, you know? Yeah, because that room was always the.
Oh, it was beyond my last. Didn't, that's great. Any day, even Hans was over there.
Oh, Tasha.
Now, well, I don't know.
It's all about being resourceful and who now, it's about knowing who you are. So you, even though I was about to talk, you said, huh? I said, ask Jane, who's going to talk to her? It's because I know you guys are over here. You also did one of those long enough that you would have watched what she would eat consistently and be able to.
And we're, we're in a. We're in a common Facebook group, so I know that you've been watching what you are eating. I am, but I have not, I have.
I gotta get back.
Yeah.
We, we are September.
Okay.
All the way back in. It's hoping a new moment, I can, twenty-eight, the new round. There, we can all be committed in the next.
My job was finding stuff to eat. It, it's so, it's so restrictive.
Yes, she doesn't really go with the food.
Yeah, that's.
That's a prince on in the bin. Right, a special Capri Sun, like.
For Tasha.
He's spot on. Exactly what I ordered. That's so fun. Okay, you're welcome. Now, you know, like a, a cookie and a bread makes me so happy. And neither one, uh, neither one was supposed to be eaten. Or the cheese on that. Or the cheese on.
And this is why you have a communications director to be able to bounce ideas off of too. If you get a, if you get something and it is local to you and you're going to be responding, it's always good to have a second set of eyes on it, whether it's another board member or the communications director and the superintendent to make sure that your information is accurate. And it's always good to copy the superintendent on that, so they know that the issue's floating out of the community.
So we should be, we, we should make that explicit, that, right? Like emails sent to individual board members have a form response. The email gets forwarded to the chair for circulation or whatever the language is, like whatever.
That process.
Yeah, we just need to lay that out as the norm, right?
Do you guys want a little more specificity in that? Add that little piece?
We can add it.
Yeah, everybody's okay.
And then additional. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Gina.
During crises, why is it just during crises, and then I think, you know, we already clearly know what are crises clearly defined, but I was wondering, like, why wouldn't we just always direct?
That's why it's, that's why it's in blue. So this is what you've had currently. And so the question is, why is it only during crisis? Individual school board members will discuss their concerns and questions to a board chair. Why is it only during crisis?
Maybe the word criteria.
Yeah, come out.
Make, make that statement be what we do as individuals, kind of an equivalent.
And there was a question around constituents, um, that I have from a board member around constituent services and what exactly that is. And so a lot of people call the office and they have questions. Now, some of them are community members, some of them are children, you know, they have children in the, in the district. One of the things I proposed to you all is that I would establish constituent services. That means we are tracking the concerns and the questions that are coming in. One, for the accountability side to make sure we're closing the loop, answering the questions, but then also so that we can start to look at patterns and trends to determine if there is a gap at a specific school, at a specific department, and also the timingness of the process. So that's where that constituent piece comes in. And if you're a community member, you, you, and you don't have a child in the building, we handle it just a little differently in what we can share and cannot share. So all of that is why we delineate it and why we are establishing that process.
So, so recommended bullets are, um, constituent issues received by board are directed to the superintendent. Board responds if concerns are forwarded to the superintendent. So you get an email in, respond, copy, say, I'm, I'm sharing this with superintendent because it's, I'm not responsible for day-to-day operations, or they, they are going to put to handle it. And then superintendent involves appropriate staff documents and informs the board of status. And by informing the board of status, it, it may be as simple as, you know, a parent has a concern and they had an issue. You pass it back to the superintendent. The issue gets handled and you, as a board member, understand the issue is handled. You may not understand, you may not be given what the final decision is, just like with a tribunal. Um, if you're, if a student is suspended, but they don't go through the tribunal process, you don't know what that process is, and you just know that it's been handled. They not be to the liking of the individual who brought the issue forward, but they've been addressed, they've been heard, and the issue's been taken care of.
And that's what you've probably seen for when we receive that board email. I will reply, thank you so much for your concern. I will follow up with, with the staff member. Um, I will, I will follow up with staff to, to ensure this matter is addressed. That is pretty much what you will always see from me. I won't go into detail on what has been handled.
Yeah.
And if you tell me if I've received anything, I'm going to close it and say, this has been handled. And that's all, that's pretty much all what my responsibility will be.
So from these five bullets, do you want to keep all five of them? Do you want to remove any of them? Do you want to add those three?
And we are to take process.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Good. Okay. Let's move, let's keep going. By board member relationships with employees, complaints against the superintendent are shared with the board, should be referred to confidential HR agreements policy page six. That's current.
So suggested would be positive and productive relationships are encouraged. Board members who receive employer-related concerns from any district personnel will refer that person to superintendent. Board members direct district personnel that bring an issue or concern back to school system at appropriate level. That's chain of command. And then school visits should be rearranged with the principal and notify superintendent. Cannot visit unannounced unless community event or acting in capacity of a parent. So I went to visit a school, I don't remember if I've shared it with you or not, but when I was going in as a parent of a junior to find out if my child was going to be graduating with everything they needed, and the principal happened to be sitting in the hallway and jumped up and said, what are you doing here? And I said, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm here as a parent. I, I didn't come to see you, I would never show up unannounced. I'm here to see a parent. If I, if I want to see you, I'll be sure to call you, tell it time and make an appointment. So just giving the building managers the courtesy of letting them know if you're coming so they can plan, because they're not just sitting there waiting for you to show up so they can drop everything and come in and spend two hours, and you showing you around the building. And that doesn't mean you can't visit, but it's a courtesy to let them know. And even if you're going to be at a sporting event or to play, you know, just, it's nice to let them know, particularly if you know that's something that's going to resonate with them. Just give them a heads up, say, I can't wait to see the play tonight. We've got tickets for Friday night, or we'll see you at the football game. Just a, just a little heads up. So.
Any discussion on that?
I think all of it. Those, those aren't like in conflict, right?
Right.
No.
Your additions, perhaps.
Yeah.
More clarity.
It goes beyond just the grievance for, with the superintendent. And we all know our parents will grieve beyond the superintendent.
Where do we refer ourselves?
So if somebody has a grievance against, like, if somebody has a direct grievance with you, one of your reports today, they go to HR and then it's going to be.
Yes, HR will come to James, but then also now we did establish the audits and investigations coordinator. So that person would be moved in as well because I want to make sure that that person has the ability, no matter what's that. She has the ability to bring any type of flawed waste of use or anything to your attention.
Who's that person again?
Alfia Price.
Superintendent evaluation, chief executive officer, current state process, timing, with timely feedback. Goals are within superintendent skillset and training or resources will be provided. Evaluation tools consistent, superintendent is given notice and explanation of evaluation goals by the fourth page three.
And suggested additions or changes would be through annual evaluation process set clear benchmark goals and objectives each year for the superintendent in alignment with the strategic plan and help superintendent accountable for operations and student performance. And board had exclusive authority to hire, fire, evaluate superintendent. Thoughts on that?
I like the additions.
I don't love the second bullet of ours.
We had a lot of, um.
That, that's sort of reflective of where we were. I'm not sure that's really necessary.
And forth about that.
Which one, the second one?
I think, I think the system has expectations and needs of the superintendent. They can meet those or not.
Yeah, and you've hired for that.
Yes.
Right? I mean, you just hired for that.
So I would.
Strike that.
This, this.
Any, any problems with removing that bullet?
Adding another two?
Yeah, yes, yes.
All right, board meetings. Look to board chair to speak, be respectful of each other. Airtime, body language professionalism, avoid side discussions, do not respond to stakeholder messages during meetings. And do not incorporate information received from stakeholders during meetings. This is so hard because sometimes people will come and say things that you know might not be accurate and you want to correct the record. And we do not want to get into a debate in a one-way conversation.
But I was gonna say that is what we discussed when we created this one was particularly, I would say during the COVID and the pandemic, we would get text messages during meetings. You know, from stakeholders with questions.
Where we violated that norm, and I thought it was right for us to, was particularly when the three of you spoke as moms of, of black children in the school system. Kind of in general responding to some of the comments that were in the community. I thought that was both powerful and important to have, to happen. And so what I, what I wouldn't want us to do is write this in such a way that we can't choose to do that. Uh, when it's appropriate.
I thought we, we, we carved that out during his part of like.
James' right. Right, it was something to be agreed upon before the board meeting.
So maybe that's how.
Yeah, I think if we agree, because what, things got tricky also during the pandemic though, because then we started responding to public comments.
And there are two opportunities to address that. One is if you've got a, um, board comment section or board, board matters section in the.
The open mic time, when you can close out a meeting and each board member can make a couple of comments.
At the end or even at the beginning, right after public comment. That may be a time to do that, but also having a, in practice, a, a process where there was somebody on staff there that will be able to immediately respond to a, a public comment that someone has, if they have an issue or something that there's a staff member that knows automatically or the board chair can say, would you go please? Our chief of staff is sitting right over here and they will connect you with the staff member that can help address your concerns.
Yes.
It still doesn't give you the opportunity to jump back in there and say, you're wrong. But it, it helps them get to where they need to be.
If, if we include a bullet about having board commentary during a board commentary section of the meeting. I think we need to reference back to nothing said then be a surprise to anyone else at the table. Like we will have had to have a conversation about it. Because it, it still isn't the right time to drop a bomb in, for example, many surprising.
We, we call that the no ambush zone, right? We don't want to caught people, you know, catch people flat footed.
No surprises.
And, and typically, we've only had really one so far. But, uh, you know, James has spoken with both myself and also my father to talk through what types of things as the current board chair would be shared. And then we have agreed that we would then be able to open it up to any board members that did have a comment before I give my speaking to them.
And that's a good practice to have. The other thing too, as board members, um, sometimes you raise your hand and the board chair is doing everything they can to try to keep things in order, but they miss you. And, you know, you don't necessarily need to be jumping up and down at your chair and waving or you call on them first. Try to, try to remember that he's managing the meeting and she's helping and, and they will get to you when they can. And if they don't, raise your hand again. But just being respectful of each other and recognizing board chair controls the meeting is important to do. So adding to this, um, a section devoted to board meeting preparation protocol. So you talked a little bit about that, but laying out some of the ground rules about when you find out information and how you, how you want to bring that forward is important to have, I think.
Yeah.
So that's, that can be a work in progress.
Yeah.
I think this is our last page. Um, other social media guidelines provided on page six. Annual complete GSB governance self-assessment and review of board norms. Section devoted to strategic planning and communication with news media guidelines established.
And to add to that, principles include superintendent on board member invitations. Um, superintendent has primary role in budget, seeks board preference and budget preparation sessions.
Those are just some other pieces that were in the document that were separate, but if we wanted to include the piece around the principles, include the superintendent on the board member invitations, because I know many of you have children. But they will invite you to come to whatever event, you know, the play, a school play. And, you know, just making sure that. Now, um, we do have something that is right in line with communication. And so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about where we are around communication in regards to COVID. So this is an example of, we're not in a crisis communication, but we do need to think about what is our community coaching strategy? Because there is an uptick on COVID. So around communication, this would be what would be posted and available. So this would be the example of what I would send to you to sell. This is what we are going to post. In our buildings, in our newsletters, on our websites, all the different media, on our socia. And I wanted you to know specifically our mitigation, our mitigation strategies that are already in place. So this board did a lot of work during the pandemic to resource us to the point that safety is number one. Probably because we definitely had two board members that were in the south. So the feeling and the need for everyone to be safe was very strong. So these are the current mitigation strategies. The Department of Health does not include or does not designate contact tracing. It does not require us or families to, to inform us that they do have COVID or there is a case of COVID. No one is saying that there was a mandate for that. I had spoken with staff around notification of if there is a case of COVID in a classroom. The Department of Health does not require us to do that either.
To, to not to. Report to tell the parent.
It does not. So that being the case, a person or a student could have COVID and no one does know. But these are the litigation strategies that we have in place to keep our students safe.
Are we, are we going to tell parent, the community that we just said?
This is what we will make sure that they know.
But I'm that in terms of the Department of Health.
We can, yes.
Isn't that kind of what you were saying? Yeah, I, I mean, it's, I, I don't even know if, I, I should have double checked, but I don't even know if the Department of Health has that same dashboard that they used to have, even the testing is not. Yeah.
Cause we've already gotten emails about, you know, my kid was saying nobody, you know.
Nobody told.
Nobody told us, but we heard that the teachers weren't supposed to tell. But I think that would be helpful for them to know.
Exactly. So we need to do some work around coherence and consistency in messaging across all buildings, all schools, all teachers. Because it was brought to my attention that someone did send a notification. But that's because of muscle memory. Oh, that's what, it wasn't, it wasn't, um, you know, unintentional, but there must be consistency in implementation of strategy of our communication. And we know that C word of communication is, has been in the QBCO where there is an expectation of communication. But according to the Department of Health, that is not an expectation of communication.
Can we, uh, I think it's, it's, I, I would, my perspective is that I would worry more strongly than that. We aren't tracking it because we don't have the tools or the processes to track it either, right? It requires a higher level government support to do all of that. And so because that, those systems aren't in place to track it, we don't know. And so we can't report information out that we can't really readily verify. And we, so we aren't, we are already aren't saying, well, this kid had the flu in the classroom or this kid had, we just, we can't verify. And so we shouldn't be sending out information that's not able to be verified.
And I think along those same lines, we also need to make sure that parents realize if there's not a, there's not infrastructure framework in place, the Department of Health assists the mandatory reportable illness. Um, and this is not what other districts are doing. It could be HIPAA violation. Reports this out to somebody's classroom, uh, and they don't have parents' permission, it could be violating their privacy. So. And I think it's also important to take the heat off of ourselves and say, we're following what other districts are doing, what the Department of Health is told us to do. It's not that we're not taking this seriously, but I think that's always the intent is that because we're not reporting, mandating masks, we're not taking this seriously. That's not the case. Uh, but we also have to remind them that we also cannot mandate masks. Uh, we get at the level, up to 10% increase, which is kind of where we are right now. Um, but we, we cannot even despite that, even if you have one or two parents that disclose that their kids are COVID positive, you can't go in and say this class needs to wear a mask, we can't.
We can't, we cannot. And we can put that in a communication as well. So I wanted to let you know what is about to happen in regards of communication for COVID. I also did do the litmus test. I talked to one superintendent for about thirty minutes this morning on a ride in and was texting with another. Um, and I would say in districts that are in the metro that did have a very, very similar perspective on COVID that this, didn't seem, same good with the city schools of daycare. So I was talking to a district that was not of like mind. So, and, and like heart and like action.
Do you want to add in there that potentially you can wear a mask if, if, if you so choose, can that be a little political?
By all means.
Your word mask there to maybe initiate some of that, um, if they want to.
So I, are we looking to say something where although we cannot require a mask, still.
Masks are accepted.
Masks are accepted, masks are accepted, but not required. Yeah. We can add that to this.
And, and I would, I would avoid, again, I just to, to repeat, I would avoid the language of saying the Department of Health does not require it, so we're not doing it, because it sort of sounds like it, it, I think it's stronger than that. It's that we don't have the information, we can't do it. Yes, like that is.
Okay, that would be the letter, if you will, the blur before the caption.
Wait. How it was communicated, almost linked to a version of the second page, you know, like.
Oh, yes, the, the second, the second page will still be there. Like a, a link to it, obviously it's text heavy, but.
Right.
This speaks to what we already have in place. We must ensure this is communicated.
Yeah, because.
That's why.
What's that a one just to be text heavy?
Yeah.
Because what, the first page is, is very much like, hey, this is on y'all. And this is like, and by the way, we're not sitting still. All these things are still in place. These are the things we're doing. Yeah, it, it can be as simple on a previous page like, and for a list of the things we're doing here.
Right here.
Visit here.
Yeah. And somewhere, you know, a link down.
Okay.
Is there still a problem with that? This isn't about for that family or that individual as far as. Martin, who were.
I have a, I have a friend whose daughter in high school had it, so she let the school know. They told her that she would have to stay out of class for three days, I think. And then when she comes back to class, she wears a mask for five days.
In Georgia?
At DHS.
The only, the only place, the only place I know of that has more team, I think, process to replace this.
Cause that's a passable.
So like I said, like, like I said, there needs to be a full, a consistent coherent message across. So I spoke with staff about that. So I will be following up because in the email that I believe we all received that one.
Yes.
I then, thank you so much for that concern. I will be following up and I did in centers, you know, last night. And I do know that there are inconsistencies, so we need to address that.
So my friend's daughter should be able to last school tonight, if you're saying.
We cannot, we cannot mandate what was stated.
But yes, you can go back to. She'd never did.
She never did have to reach for it.
We cannot mandate the, what was recommended to.
Uh, if it was a parent's suggestion, that's one of them.
Now, she had a fever.
You should be, you should be fever free for twenty-four hours, just like we. Anything else, but even in that, do we give someone a thermometer and say, when was the last time you had a fever?
It's a, they, they, it's honor system.
And in effect, COVID is treated like the flu. Don't show up sick. Wait twenty-four hours. It's kind of honest.
All right.
It just says stay home for five days.
You say you're asymptomatic, but it.
Day zero is the first day of symptoms. Then five days. And it just says, wear a mask if you must be around, other kids don't say.
But we, we can't mandate.
Cause it's not based on.
And like you said.
Please work for twenty-four. All right. The isolation and precaution for people with COVID nineteen, what do you do if you are exposed to COVID nineteen, the symptoms of it, you know, washing, coughing and sneezing? That's exactly what we have, what we will post is what the Department of Health provided today. All right, so at this time, we will take a break so that we can go ahead and release that and then move into executive section. Thank you guys for. And then on the specific school guidance. With me, you're going to go ahead and do what you know is like.